As you are able and willing, please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Thank you all for coming, especially the administrators from every single building. Appreciate that, coming on a summer meeting. I don't believe we have anybody signed up to deliver public comments, so we'll move right into the report of the secretary, and I will entertain a motion, please, to approve the minutes of our last meeting.
I move to approve the minutes. It's a regular meeting of Wednesday, July 30th, 2025.
I'll second Lisa.
Lisa, thank you. Comments or questions? The usual, nice job.
Yep.
Amazing, as always.
Okay, all in favor? That's 5-0, and those are approved. Brings us the report of the chair. I have a couple of free items. No, I've got five items. First, town officials' meeting schedule. Heidi has spoken with both the town managers, and they've agreed that we will continue the practice of meeting on the second Wednesday of the month at 8:30 in the morning, because both of the town office buildings are in flux, shall we say? We're gonna do, we'll continue to do the rotation, but when it's either South Berwick or Lee, it's turned, that meeting will be just by Zoom.
Okay.
And then on the third month, or first month, depending on how we start it, when we host, we'll actually do a live meeting at the central office, okay? So, as we've done every year, if you're available to attend that and interested, please coordinate for me so we don't wind up running into quarantine issues.
The first one will be in September, the second Wednesday in September?
Yes. Yep, and location to be D.
The 10th, okay.
Good. Second item to report on, we just earlier this evening had a workshop with the Rollinsford School Board and had a lovely conversation with them. They came with some agenda items. We talked about communications and ways to improve communications between our two boards and between the buildings and the board, and lots of really good ideas get on the table. We're gonna try to get them on the distribution lists for the updates that the principals send out, the guidance, the school counseling newsletter, we'll get them on the distribution for that. And they're gonna start linking to our website from their website for various things as well. So that'll be good. Second thing was cellphone policy. New Hampshire has passed a law requiring that their students not use their cellphones from bell to bell, and they're interpreting that as meaning including on the buses. So, they're faced with this problem of, kind of a separate problem that we will ultimately have too, potentially is, you know, how do we ask our bus drivers to enforce a cellphone policy? But, the discussion was what is Marshwood's policy? And we don't right now have a policy, to my knowledge, around, well, we certainly don't have a cellphone policy per se. We have practices in the buildings around use on the buses. Our policy committee will grapple with cellphone policy, starting in the first meeting at the end of September, so more on that, but we had a great discussion on that as well. And then we just talked briefly about updates, student population updates and trends and things like that. We will next meet with them probably in January of next year, unless there's any discussion about sending additional of their students to our building, in which case we'll probably meet with them sooner to iron that out. So, we had a very good meeting with them. That was that. There's a note in here, or an item about the Maine School Board Association Delegate Assembly that takes place in October. It's the Saturday before the annual convention update, and I am the delegate because you elected me to be the delegate.
Yes.
What, there will be a series of regional meetings coming up in September, early September, where all of the stuff that'll get voted on at the delegate assembly will be discussed. So, new and changes to resolutions, some constitution and bylaw changes, that kind of thing. So, stay tuned for the announcement on those regional meetings. If you can make them, you know, dial in, they'll be of interest. Okay, and then, of course, the fall MSBA/MSMA conferences, October 23rd and 24th. I don't believe registration is open for that yet, but we typically, as a board, have a pretty good attendance at that, and it's kind of cool, because we can split up the attendance at the various sessions and then come back with some good notes. So, keep that in your calendars if you can. Okay? Lastly, opening day for faculty and staff is going to be on the 20, is it the 28th?
26th.
26th, I'm sorry, and that's, that's a Thursday, right?
That is a Tuesday.
It's a Tuesday.
The 28th is the Thursday.
That's why I have that in my head, so, sorry about that. Tuesday, the 26th, is opening day, and traditionally, we'll have as many of the board as can make it attend to, among other things, introduce the new faculty and staff, so...
I can go.
You can go.
Yeah.
You think you'll be able to make it?
Possibly.
Okay.
But what day is it on?
It's Tuesday, the 26th.
August.
It's in the morning, so, like, 8 to 10 is the time frame we're looking at. And I did not bring the staff list yet. It's still evolving a little bit?
Yeah, yeah, that's fine.
We've got a few more.
But we'll, yeah, we'll figure out how to split it up, and we each get a chance to go up to the, well, they typically do it by building.
Oh, I would, by school, that's right. And Terry's doing the same thing she did before, where she's collecting a little fun fact or a little bit of background on each person, so, some information.
So, let me know if you find out you can't make it.
Okay.
Okay.
Great. And that concludes my report and brings us to the report of the superintendent.
Awesome, thank you. So, I got a very exciting email a few days ago from Nellie. Nellie Young is here with us tonight, that she has received a grant and realized after she received the grant that she might have needed to ask permission to get the grant. Great, they're gonna love it! So, Nellie's here. I'm gonna start with her and give her an opportunity to tell you about the Marshwood Greenhouse Grant.
Cool.
Hi, hello everybody. My name is Nellie Young. I'm an incoming senior at Marshwood High School. I'm part of the HOLD club. HOLD stands for HOG, Outdoor Leadership Development Club, and we're an outdoorsy kind of hiking club at our school, but now we're branching in...
Can I, just, drag the microphone over so that you can see?
But now we're branching into gardening this year, and we're gonna be refurbishing the old greenhouse at our school.
Oh, cool.
Okay, so, so far, we've had two cleanup days, and we have one more scheduled for the last Saturday of August. For our first day, we took out about six inches of dirt. It didn't have a lot of nutrients in it, so we took it out, and then the second day, we added in that compost, and we organized the overall building. And then our final day, we're gonna be adding in a little bit more compost. We had a whole truckload, so we thought that would be enough, but after taking it all out, we realized it wasn't enough, so we're gonna do our third day with more compost into all of the five beds, and then power wash the rest of the building. All right, so we have two objectives for this project. The first is we're gonna be growing perennials and flowers that we will donate to two local retirement homes in South Berwick and Elliott in the spring, and then we're gonna grow various vegetables, herbs, and fruits that we're gonna distribute to local food networks, like the Food Pantry. Thank you. So, here is the breakdown of our budget. We applied for a total amount of $130. We asked for items like full-spectrum LED lights for the heating in the winter, infrastructure repairs for the doors, the windows, and the beds, and then pots, customizable floral labels, and then gardening supplies. So here is the purpose for those, and then the cost this morning. So here is a rough timeline for the project. We have, for August, we're gonna clean up and prepare everything for the new school year by adding new soil and power washing the building. And then in September, we're gonna start doing our planting through trial and error. We're gonna see what works with this greenhouse, because every greenhouse is different. And then in February, after getting concrete plan of what flowers, herbs, and vegetables do work for this project, we're gonna start our process with the retirement home. And then in May, we will deliver all of these flowers to the two retirement homes. It will impact about 70 retired people, so I'm super excited for this project to begin. So, thank you all so much. I hope we can get this approved.
Thank you. Nellie, can I ask you a question? So maybe you could go up there. So, for those listening, those that have a high schooler, or perhaps you're a high schooler listening this evening, how would they get involved to help with HOLD? Or how would they sign up for this particular club?
Okay, so I am the vice president of HOLD and Interact. Interact is a different club that kind of does volunteering work, so I'm gonna make sure that every month at our Interact meetings, we're gonna be promoting this, and then for HOLD at our weekly meetings, I'll also be promoting this as a volunteering opportunity, because I'm making sure it's as fun as possible for people. We get to pick out the vegetables and the fruits that we grow, and everybody can have their own little saying what happens with it.
Very good. Thank you.
Any other questions?
And HOLD is open to anybody who wants to join, right?
Yeah, HOLD and Interact is very open. We have a lot of freshmen here. I believe we have 35 freshmen that applied to be in part of our Google Classroom, so we have a pretty big crew this year.
That's great.
That's great.
Thank you, Nellie.
That's marvelous work. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Really well done.
Okay, so, at some point, we'll probably just need a quick approval on that grant. When do we get to new business, I guess?
Yeah, okay, sure.
Sounds good. So, the next item on my report is handbook review. One of the things that we worked on last year in policy was just making sure that we're sort of doing a systematic and regular review of our building-based handbooks. That process is sort of, I think, ongoing always, but I asked the principals to come tonight and just give you just a brief update about any changes they've made recently, or just kind of the status of where we're at with the handbooks in each building. Anne, you wanna go first? I'm looking at you.
I'll be really quick. As you know, I'm starting my first full year as principal. I'm really excited. Before we ended last year, our kids voted on a new logo for our building, so the covers changed.
Oh, cool.
Over the summer, we worked on our mission statement, so that's new. And then, I did find a couple of tagos in it that had the wrong links and that kind of thing, but I intend to be looking at the entire document with my leadership team this year and make some adjustments, and I found it to be very clunky to find things in it, so I'd like to make it a little bit easier for people to find things, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I went through because, just like Anne, there were some things that we needed to update. So obviously, the school calendar I put in there, but each year, you find little things that happen at school that you're like, oh, that should be in the handbook, because if this comes back, I need to make sure that it's in there. So, part of the safety, I wanted to put in that a public display of affection at middle school has risen a little bit. So, I made sure that that was in our safety, so we worded that in there as well. And then I added the Infinite Campus link. I wanted that to be in our handbook as well. I'm trying to put that in as many places as possible, so families are able to access it by many avenues, not just calling the office. So I've added that under our communications. And then, under plagiarism, we added a little artifact in there about AI. And then, under student retention, we did a lot of talk about this in our policy committee, and so I added the work that we did this year with our summer leap, and so I talked about our summer leap in there and what that looks like. And then the other thing that I added in here is that, I don't think that it's very, it wasn't very clear, like, when something happens with the students and their Mac, their computer, what the process and procedure is. So we made sure to put that specifically in our handbook, so students understood what that was. And then, other than that, oh, I also put in our restorative practice, what that is gonna look like, and we're starting an attendance committee at school, so eventually, we're gonna put that in there, so that, what that looks like, and probably next year, with the restorative piece, our suspension and stuff will look different as well.
Great.
Thank you.
So we did the handbook at Great Works School with a committee probably, probably 10, 12 years ago. So that's how it started, is like, you know, one of those things that should be in it. And the process now is, like Christine says, I think, you know, principals will look at it and like, oh, what's coming up? So it wouldn't be bad. I like your idea of the leadership team taking a look at ours over this coming year. Here's what we thought a few years ago, and anything else to add. A couple of things that we have put in the last year or two. One is on attendance. Now, there was always a, you know, a blurb, you know, you cannot be here for attendance, you know, we want you here. But we really bulked that up a little bit with the chronically absent kiddos, and so, and about truancy, so, and that, that's, I mean, I don't know how many parents and kids read the book, but we, you know, when we're at conferences, when we're at open houses, you know, we kind of say it all the time, so, a bunch of different places. And the other, the other thing that we've added was the phones, because we're getting more and more the kiddos, you know, with the watches or the phones, and all of a sudden, parents are, they're texting their kids, here's the change of plans, and so all of a sudden, we're looking for a kiddo to go on bus eight, and the kid's being picked up, or vice versa, and they're not going through the office. So that's one of those things that we've really said, you know, please, you know, your kiddo, they can have it. It's in their backpack. However, once they hit, I don't know what the policy will be with the bus, you know, once they hit the steps of Great Works, that phone goes in your backpack, and then it comes out once you get back on the bus, and if there's any change of plan. So, but that's teaching the parents to be able, what the policy is, so, but that's the biggest one. The other things are just, you know, we're adding steam and things like that for our curriculum offerings. So, but those are the two biggies.
Great.
Thank you.
So we did a lot of change last year, too. So this year, so we added "howdy" as our handbook. So, really, this year, I just had to do a lot of staff changes and make sure everything was correct. We, we worked on the handbook before. We added three-year-olds last year, so adding three-year-old staff and all of the supplementary staff there. So just as everybody else said, just I really wanted to look through everything and make sure we, I, our big thing is our traffic patterns and drop off and pickup, so I had double-lined, underlined all of the, please park in the designated space, just because that is often some, it's confusing, and we just wanted to make sure that everybody knows exactly how to make it smooth in the morning drop off. And then, just as Jerry has said, we've had a lot of issues with smart watches with third graders, and so we, last year, just said we do not allow smart watches during the school day, because again, kids are texting their parents, or parents are texting, or taking pictures. So, and again, some of the watches are not even like, they're like, kind of smart watches, but they still do the same thing, so we just asked those to stay home, and we revamped the attendance, just really tried to give some numbers and about missing school and what it means when you miss a couple of days of school. So, really, that was all of our, just, and like, last year, we did like dress code, it was so outdated, so just made it more appropriate for our age of just like, dress warm in the winter, and everything else is, we'll figure it out in Seekers. So, it was very antiquated before that, so, that's what we're quoting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Has Dr. Garvis actually had a chance to look at the handbook already?
Yes, sort of.
We can.
You know, Nellie's been in the school longer than I have, so maybe Nellie should do this. No, I think the point about the handbook of the high school, definitely that idea about it being an ongoing process of revision, that'll take on some new life, and start of the school year, something with the addition of the new administrative team, even the extent to which, you know, the welcome page just has the word principal, doesn't have anyone's name associated with it. But more substantively, they're looking through a leadership team about what we do and how we say what we do, and how we do what we say we do. And I know there was some concern last year about eligibility for extracurricular activities, and it certainly states in the handbook that 9 o'clock Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, and 9:15 on Thursdays. So students who are engaged in extracurricular activities, make sure they're not tardy, but that's the window time cover. But, yeah, the handbook, certainly some work done over summer, but a chance to revisit that and through the year ahead, so that's, that's the textbook.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
The next item on my report is some updates for the board on professional development that has happened over the summer. We've been busy.
Yeah.
So, Mr. Scully threw the ELO grant, brought in the New Hampshire Learning Initiative, and they did a two-day workshop on project-based learning for about 10 or so high school staff participated. I heard it was fantastic, and the teachers that attended were raving about the units that they wrote, and how excited they were to try those out this year, and we have a two-year contract with them through the grant, so they'll be back next summer to do some more training, which is exciting. Oh, you went?
I did.
You have any thoughts on it?
It's really exciting. I think the hardest part for us was to figure out how to really encompass this whole idea of including the community in what we're doing in schools, because that's a big part of the project-based learning. So that was the hardest part for the teachers to figure out, because we could figure out, you know, what we wanted to do with our standards and the curriculum, but how to involve the community and who that is. Is that Rotary? Is it the elementary school? And, but that's a really exciting part, because that's gonna make us all more connected, so, yeah, we're looking forward to it.
Cool. So that's exciting. Also related to the ELO grant, right before school starts, this hasn't happened yet, but Mr. Scully is gonna be working with a group of teachers to train them up in some, to build some capacity in mentoring for ELOs, as he has upwards of 100-plus kids that he's working with. The program's really grown a lot. We need to build some capacity there, so, to train up, and the grant provides some small stipends for teachers to do some of that mentoring once they've been trained. So, if, say I'm an English teacher and I wanna mentor a couple of kids who are doing ELOs, it's a provision for me to do that. So he's gonna be training those people up on the procedures and processes and expectations, so that's exciting. Great.
Great.
We've had some teachers engaged in curriculum work this summer, specifically in physical education and health, in science, and the middle school's been doing some work on their advisory SEL curriculum. We had some, some teachers, some PE teachers go to some higher levels of project adventure certification and training in the beginning of the summer. We have active work with restorative practice happening, both at the middle school and high school. Implementation team here at the high school has two days of PD with Stacy Barlow coming up in, next week, and we have a kickoff presentation scheduled on August 28th, I believe, with staff. So, that's exciting to just see that work start to get legs. A group of us went to the ASCA National Conference again this year in California. It was in Long Beach. We loved Long Beach. Anne and Nina and I attended, along with six counselors. Does that sound right? I think there was nine of us. It was an excellent conference, and the counselors took so much away from it. I just, it was really fun this year for me to step back and watch their excitement and how, just how pumped they are to come back and try all the new stuff they're learning, so that was really cool. We had Andrea Graf went to AP School for Spanish this year, so that was great, so she can teach AP Spanish now. We have mentor training that happened yesterday and today. We do that every summer just to keep our pool of trained teacher mentors up to speed. We have Devin Weber, who's our elementary math interventionist, intervention coordinator. She kind of helps intervention in all three elementary schools. She did the fractions champion training through AVMR, which is Math Recovery, and she is now able to teach that course, so she's gonna be starting to increase capacity of all of our teachers to do more deep tier-one interventions in their classroom around fraction learning, which is a sticky point for a lot of kids. And our administrative team had a fun day. Last week, we went over the Kidery Community Center, and we had some PD time with Kim Marshall, who wrote our supervision and evaluation book and the system that we use for, for teacher support, and we were able to do that in collaboration with SAD 60, which was a lot of fun, because we got to connect with them as well, so built some bridges there. And that's the end of that part. What else do we have? Brainstorming ideas for presentations this year. I don't know if people have had a chance to give that any thought.
Can we get back to you on that?
Yeah.
Like, or send you it off, like an email?
I think typically, we send ideas to Joe, and then Joe will send them, yeah.
I'm happy to coordinate that.
Okay. Sure, I mean, we have the calendar, which is kind of bleeds into the next item. So when we met last, we talked about needing to pick which February dates and which April dates we wanted to meet, and Mr. Cormier, after he reminded me that the first meeting in May needs to be the April meeting, that April 29th date.
Yep.
In order to allow the budget timeline to work the way it needs to work with the appropriate spacings. Yep. But the question still remains about February 11th or February 25th. We were hoping to make that decision tonight, so it's up to you guys.
I'm not here on the 25th, so if it comes down to, nobody cares, it'd be nice to have the 11th.
Yeah, does that work?
Okay.
11th is the date.
Let's do the 11th.
You're in such a different place now than you were.
Yeah.
That's so great.
So, I will, Rebecca created a nice calendar for us with all the meetings. We'll update it with those dates, and then, if you wanna send ideas for board presentations to Joe, then when we meet, maybe next time we meet, we can, we can just...
Start filling that in.
Fill it in, or, yeah, exactly. We can fill it in and bring a draft, and then if we wanna move stuff around, we can.
Heidi, from your perspective, do you have some things in your head that you think would be good for us to ask for?
Yeah, to know, yeah.
Well, I mean, there's some things we kind of do every year, right? Like, it's nice to get an update on our student data. It's a fun one to do.
Always.
We usually have a curriculum review area that we hear about. I mean, it really depends on what you're, what's your interest in. I mean, I feel like the last few years, we've been really focused on school counseling, on ELO programs, and we've seen such amazing things happening in those areas, but I don't, I mean, I don't know.
Something, something that I've always kind of like wondered about and requested, but I know it's hard, because everyone's quite busy, and we try to keep the school board meetings to a certain length that's reasonable, but I would really love to hear from more students.
Yes.
I think they have so much to share, and, I mean, can you imagine being in high school and coming to a board meeting? Like, kudos. That is intimidating. Maybe not so much in the summer, but the rest of the year, I can imagine it would be, and it's just a great opportunity to hear those student voices that we say is so important, and hear some of the great work that's going on from the people that are being served and benefiting and wanting to share. I think it would just be, it doesn't... I think it would just be, it doesn't have to be every meeting, but to have some like little taste of that. What was that? Your presentation was all of two and a half minutes.
Yes.
Like, I think we can squeeze that in.
Yes. I mean, maybe we could hear from some clubs and activities we haven't heard from before.
Yeah, yes. Because there's so many new ones to hear.
Yeah, the new ones.
Yeah.
Okay, I can work with Dr. Garros on that. And we'll come up with some ideas.
And it doesn't have to be just high school. Yeah, because like we could get the little ones, a group of little ones coming in. I mean, whatever, I just think that would be so fun.
Yeah, Erin, I can hold and definitely be interested in presenting to you guys. So I'll let you know about that.
Great.
Okay, excellent.
Can we also think about student reps for our committees as well? I know that, yes, we've talked about that. I know we have one sometimes at Wellness, but it would be great if we could have student or students at Policy regularly. And I don't know, all of the subcommittees would be great. I know some other boards that we've talked to regularly have students in attendance at their.
Policy meets during the school day, though. It might be true.
It would work if it was a student who had block. Or a off, like maybe a senior with early release or something.
If we're doing cell phones, it would be great.
Well, we definitely need.
Absolutely, need student listening, yeah.
So we'll email you, Joe.
Okay.
I guess like a small question might be, too, are students interested in participating in these meetings? It's nice to hear from them, but are they interested in participating as well?
I love the question. I think the answer's yes. I mean, I feel like when we've asked kids in the past, like when we were doing the dress code revision work or whatever, the kids have been eager.
Yeah.
To, and great, you know, and when we, when we worked on the suspension work that we did last year, the kids, the kids were really happy to participate and wanted to be heard. So I'm sure not every kid would love it.
It's just a busy time to be, maybe in the evening.
A volunteer, I think it would just be a volunteer type of thing. Like, if you know, hold and interact, want to do a presentation, then that would be cool. It's nice to put on your college application, right?
All right, so I got a couple of ideas I wrote down, and then we'll hear from you guys as you let it mull. So just, I just wanted to give you guys a quick update. Ryan mentioned it in FNF, that the ESA, ESEA federal entitlement funding has been a little different this year than it's been in past years. And when we met in April for the board workshop, we did not know at that point if we were going to get any local entitlement regarding Title I, Title II, Title IV, which are the three title grants that we get in addition to the special education entitlement. So the first one we heard about in maybe June was Title I. We did get our Title I allocation, which is great, because that's the biggest one, and that's the one that supports reading intervention. So that's really the only thing we talked about when we, when we met at the board workshop, because we had no confidence at that point that we were going to get Title II or Title IV. So Title II funds support teacher growth and development. So it's really professional development funds. And we did end up getting our allocation, which is about $70,000.
Oh, good.
Which is good, because we don't really budget a lot in the local budget for PD. We really lean on the Title II funds. So really grateful that that came through. And just, just to have the conversation with you all, because we didn't really do it during the board workshop, because we weren't sure we were getting any money. We typically use that money strictly for professional development. So my intention is we'll set some aside for tuition reimbursement for teacher courses, which is very standard. And then we'll do projects for each school that just encompass a lot of different PD areas. So we have flexibility, whether it's literacy, math, science, SEL. It could be additional project adventure training. It could be restorative practice. It's really, I'll write it in such a way that it can encompass all those things. So the buildings have some flexibility as, as opportunities come up for teachers during the year. And then the other title funds that we get is Title IV. So we get, our allocation for Title IV for this year is just over $17,000, $17,082. And that, excuse me, is what they call safe and healthy schools funds. That money is a little bit more flexible than other title funds. And so we have typically used that money for anything that would support safe and healthy schools, right? So to support SEL work, to support school safety, to support intervention for students and how we help students be more successful. So the things that we were talking about this year were Edgenuity, which is our online learning platform that we use. We use that for summer school. We use that for students who, for whatever reason, need to move to an online platform, both at the middle school and high school. So that's been a really good tool for us post-COVID. And so using some of the money to support that and offset the costs to the building. It doesn't come cheaply. It's a good product, but it's not cheap. And the other thing is the Panorama Student Dashboard. So we have a system through Panorama that syncs with our Infinite Campus. And it creates a one-stop dashboard that, that shows teachers, student attendance, behavior, grades, kind of all in one place. And it's really helpful for those MTSS conversations around which kids might be at risk or be struggling. And we originally had taken it out of the budget, because it was expensive. We accidentally got it for free last year, so we kept using it, which was fantastic. But then, when I reached out in the spring, when we were building the budget, and I talked to the folks that were using it, particularly at the high school, they were like, yeah, we really like it. You know, more and more teachers are starting to become aware of it and really using it. So supporting that, for sure.
Excellent.
And then that would still leave a little bit of money to continue to support the counselors going to ASCA or other, other people going afar, like.
Good.
So just if we are short for professional development funding, I sent this before, but I can resend it. But the L-Fond Workforce Development Fund, if we become a provider. I know it seems confusing on the website, but any of your employees or teachers that live in Maine and are over the age of 18 are eligible for $1,200 a year to go towards their professional development. It's, it covers like the half of whatever it is. So if you do two workshops that are like $500 each, you get $250 covered by the grant. But that, I don't know when that will expire, but we could tap into that before December for anyone doing professional development.
So we are a member. Oh, I signed us up.
Oh, you did?
But it doesn't necessarily mean that I, that people know how to use it. So still work to be done, but yes, definitely an awesome resource.
Okay, great. It is a lot of money.
Yeah. The last thing I wanted to share with you is just happened. I have to get the email out, because otherwise I won't remember it exactly correctly. It's a little piece of frustrating news, I'm afraid. So I got an email from Andrea, who has been doing just incredible amounts of work, taking AP Spanish school this summer. And she's also been the one doing work with the dual enrollment Spanish course. So yesterday, she emailed me, Monday, she emailed me. I just received this email, and she forwarded it to me. So this is from SNHU, who is the university that we were working with for dual enrollment Spanish. It says, as I, there's pleasantries, and it says, "As I begin preparing the MOU for our potential partnership, I received some unfortunate news from our academic quality and legal teams. Unfortunately, SNHU is not authorized to offer face-to-face dual enrollment courses in the state of Maine. Under our existing NC-SARA membership, we are able to offer dual enrollment opportunities. However, they must be delivered via distance education only. To comply with the CERA guidelines, the courses must be fully online, award post-secondary credit, and follow the distance education rules." So it's sad, because basically, they're like, we can't do it. And they just told us.
This must be a new, because I'm very familiar with NC-SARA policies. So that is, that's fascinating. Uh-oh, so what's our backup plan?
I don't think we have one. I just found this out two days ago.
Okay, because YCCC, we could partner with. It's just that they're difficult to get ahold of. So I can volunteer to reach out, but.
But this was a Spanish class that's already being offered, that the bonus was that it was going to be.
The bonus was that it's going to be dual enrollment.
It doesn't change the offering of the Spanish class.
The kids can still have the Spanish class. It's just to get the dual enrollment credit, you have to get the syllabus approved, right?
Oh, this is a real bummer.
It's a bummer, but I mean, we got to a point with YCCC, and I don't want to misrepresent this, because Angie and a couple of the other counselors were doing this work. But where YCCC was kind of like, we have reached our limit with dual enrollment. There's only so much we're going to be able to offer. The funds are limited, and it was kind of taking on a life of its own. So I think that it's not as easy as it once was to get multiple. We can still work on it. We'll still, we'll still ask, but it's gotten pulled back a little bit. It's interesting.
Fascinating, okay. Because I was going to actually put this on my list for something that I wanted to explore, because this is one of my goals, is to offer more dual enrollment here at the high school, like to be, so we can be comparative to other high schools in the area. And yeah, so I have to find another option.
Well, I think it's, it's so valuable to students, but I, I'm only speculating, but I think that the colleges are reaching a point where they're like, oh, we're.
Cutting back.
Cutting back on it, because we don't want to cut too much into what we actually, like our main objectives, right?
Yes, yes. And I'm just wondering if you, University of Maine system is amping up, because University of New Hampshire just amped up a dual enrollment program. They just launched this summer. And so I'm just wondering if that, just the state institutions will kind of take it over versus these private institutions like SNU. So, oh, I, this is something I'll work on.
I just wanted you guys to know what I know. It's, you know, certainly not due to any lack of effort on the part of our staff.
Yeah, thank you.
It's too bad.
Too bad.
Okay, well.
Thanks for that, Becky.
Yeah, thank you for the update on that.
Okay, well done. Great. No correspondence to report on, so we get to the report of the committees. FNF met earlier this evening. We've got a review of the July numbers. Everything looks good, tracking just as we expected to, within a fraction of a percent of projections. Cash balance at the end of the month still looks good. Delta Education is running a little bit ahead, which is good. That's pretty much it at this stage, because there's not too much else going on in July. So that's, that's the numbers portion of it. Heather, did you want to speak about the other stuff?
Sure. I mean, this is such great news with facilities. Everything seems to be wrapping up. Marshwood Greatwork School, the gym floor is still being renovated and polished and should be new soon. Central School, the ceiling is being replaced in one of the pre-K classrooms in the two bathrooms downstairs, yippee. The module in the back of Central School has been worked on all summer, and it's totally beautiful. We are so lucky to have our staff that we have to be fixing it up. So the shingles and the siding are going to be going on, and it will hopefully be done by the start of school. But if not, that's okay. We'll still get it done. Central School floor update is being updated, and then some doors are being fixed in Central School as well. The Elliott Office space is being, there's a one little space being updated and freshened up, you said? But I forget which space that is. The conference room, that's right. And yes, so we're still waiting on the last miniature bus with the wheelchair lift. And we've hired a couple of new drivers this summer, which means we have all the runs covered. Woo-hoo!
Right.
And we currently do not have any spares. So if you are, so if you are interested in becoming a bus driver, then please reach out. Happy to have you. There's, so our new GPS tracking situation for the buses, the software is up and running. Very excited about that. And there's been some training that's been happening, and the parents are going to love it. That's it.
Can I just add one thing, Heather? One of the things that we talked about today when we were meeting as an A-team is Ryan's going to work with the Transportation Department and get reps from Transportation at those fall open houses to help parents access that new app and just show them how to get onto the app and use it.
Great idea.
That is a great idea. And Policy will next meet on the 24th September, and Wellness and SEL will next meet on September 3rd. So we'll get an update from those folks after our next meeting. That concludes the report of the committees, brings us to new business. We have a smallish number of items. I'm going to ask for your help, if I may, because we don't have, under new business, a specific motion with regard to that hold grant. So if you wouldn't mind telling me again the amount.
It was $1,630.
$1,630. And the source of the money is?
Maine Youth Food Council.
Maine Youth Food Council. Got it, thank you. So we'll get to, I'll make that motion if the bill needs to. Okay. So first, ma'am, motion, please, to approve the nomination of Christopher Jones.
I move to approve the nomination of Christopher Jones, Assistant Principal, Marshwood High School, school year 2025 to '26, start date August 18th, 2025. $1,000, $119,135 prorated to start date, which is $103,595.65.
I'll second Kate.
Second Kate, thank you. Please.
Thank you. Mr. Jones is here. Say hi.
Welcome. So I'm really happy that Chris applied for our open assistant principal position, and he really impressed our, our committee. Chris comes to us with a bachelor's in political science from UMaine Farmington and a master's in educational leadership and management from Pittsburgh State. He has deep experience as a special educator. I first met Chris when I was still working at Noble, and he was working at Noble as a special educator and has recently also been pretty closely involved with the Mary Heard Academy. We think his experience is really going to be beneficial, and we're excited to have him on board.
Great, thank you.
Welcome, thank you.
Hang on, vote and welcome. Any other comments or questions from the board? All in favor? That's 5-0. Okay, motion, please, with regard to the nomination of Bridget Braun.
I move to approve the nomination of Bridget Braun, first-year probationary teacher, kindergarten. Elliott Elementary School, school year 2025 to 2026, bachelor's step five, $54,841.
I'll second Kate.
Kate, thank you.
So really excited to welcome Bridget to Elliott Elementary as the third kindergarten teacher on that team. Bridget comes to us with a bachelor's of science in elementary education and history from Worcester State. And I really enjoyed meeting her. She has some excellent and interesting background in teaching. She taught at, she taught in Hawaii for three years. So she worked in Hawaii public schools. And it just, we had a good conversation about what it was like to work in public education in Hawaii. And then most recently, she, she worked in a, it's not a Montessori school, but it's like a Montessori. It's a regioamilia school.
Oh, wow, cool, yeah.
In Portland. So she has a really interesting background and a really wonderful way about her. I think she's going to be a really good fit at Elliott.
Nice, great.
Very cool.
Great. Comments or questions? All in favor? Great, that's 5-0. Welcome to Bridget.
Welcome, Bridget.
Okay, I want to try this third motion. I don't have it written in front of me, so let's see. I move that we approve the hold grant of $1,630 from the MYFC. Any further discussion? Excellent presentation, thank you again.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you for coming.
All in favor? That's 5-0. Very happy to approve that.
We want a tour when it's all.
Yes, for sure.
You could do another presentation.
Any last comments or questions from the board?
Thank you all for coming and giving us.
Yes, appreciate that, dragging you in here during the summer. Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
I'm moved to adjourn.
My second.
Heather, all in favor? That is 5-0. We are adjourned. Thank you all for coming.
Thank you.